Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call this work session to order. And that was, that's pretty loud, isn't it? Something's happened with audio. Harpreet, are you up or is Ryan up? Okay, great, thanks.
All right, good evening, everyone. So, first part of our presentation. Oh, thank you, okay. Thank you, sorry. First part of our presentation is on benefits and, first on benefits, compensation. Then, Harpreet, we'll get into revenues and fees and next steps. So, jumping right in with compensation, as we do each year, we present to you all a comparison based on information we have for consideration of a potential merit increase for employees. And here you can see the history for not only Roswell but neighboring municipalities over the last five fiscal years. And we put, in addition to that, on the far right, a cumulative increase. So you can see that, you know, if someone started here at Roswell before January, excuse me, July of 2014, and a person with similar performance, starting at the same salary in Alpharetta, Sandy Springs, et cetera, where they would be today, based on receiving the average increase. So certainly, staff feels we should consider strongly merit increases on an annual basis, as some of the other cities have done. So just some good comparison information. Were you there? Any questions I can answer about that? I should say that Johns Creek's numbers do include both a small col and a merit. They combined two, but this is the total.
Is there, other than just, like, a lot of things here in Roswell, a reason why we did it every other year? Or was it just, kind of, just because that's what we did?
My understanding, and that was a decision by council before I came, but my understanding was that the thinking was back during tougher economic times, that the discussion in here was something along the lines of, instead of giving smaller increases, we'd like to give larger ones. Something along those lines. I wasn't here at the time, but yeah.
Mathematically brilliant, as you can see.
Yeah, it really added up, right.
So Jim, how would, if I went back to that base year, how would the starting salaries for those people compare by city? Were they similar? Were they?
I think they were similar. Now, we did a comp study and trued everything up for fiscal '16. So where it was in '14, I'm not sure. We did true up our pay grades with a comp study done in '15 and took effect January 16th. So actually, that would have been FY '17. And we are proposing to do another one, since that's been about four years, this coming year. And by the time it takes effect, it would have been closer to four or five years.
So when do you feel that analysis would be completed?
Well, if we, if it's approved in the budget.
So I'm not talking about the increased compensation, I mean the analysis of the compensation.
Right. Well, if that was approved in the budget, the cost of the comp study.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd recommend a more comprehensive. Last time, it was more of a salary survey, just saying, hey, what is your pay range for this position? But it's been close to 10 years since we've had someone come in and actually look at job descriptions, you know, send questionnaires to employees, saying, what do you actually do, based on what's on paper here? So that's what we're proposing. And if we did that, to answer your question, it was approved in the budget and it was undertaken, say, in July. I would anticipate we get the results in the fall and come back potentially mid-year with some kind of a recommendation for an adjustment. Okay, moving on to benefits. Just gives you a kind of a current snapshot of what coverage levels our employees have. So quite a few, you know, 60%, almost 60% of our employees have some type of dependent coverage, either family or employee plus child, or employee plus spouse. And then 41% take employee only. We do have a small percentage that decline coverage, either they have a, you know, spouse that's covered elsewhere, or a better plan elsewhere. Our wellness participation is at 64%. We'd love that to be 100. I'll show you in a later slide that it has gone up since you all approved the increase in the wellness credit this past fall. So that's good news. It's moving in the right direction. And we've got some, I'll talk in a minute about this, briefly about some results of the wellness plan. We do have three different plans. We used to have just one, a high deductible HSA plan, but we heard loud and clear from employee surveys that they wanted options, so we do have a couple different options. That said, we still have, you know, 84% of our employees that pick the plan we've had for a while. They all have varying premiums and deductibles, depending on the coverage chosen. The city does cover between 85% and 90% of the cost, and that's pretty typical. We'll see again on this upcoming survey, our compensation study we do, but that's pretty typical of what other municipalities do, as far as the cost share. So far, so good on our group health fund and how it's performing. You can see for plan years '16 to '17, and then, as you know, our plan year's off from fiscal year. It's October through September. This is four months into this plan year. It started last October. But it's looking a little bit better, as far as our pain loss ratio, which of course is just the amount of claims versus what's expected by our reinsurance carriers. And makes a big difference. If we can keep that number below 85%, then we've got a much better chance of not having a big cost increase, when time to renew our reinsurance. And we're in our fifth year now, is that right? Of being self-insured, as opposed to fully insured. And of course, the city takes on one more risk with that, but that's why we have the reinsurance. And we also benefit from any savings, as opposed to being fully insured. We do monitor the claims on a weekly and monthly basis, just to see what our trends are. But so far, again, just a third of the way through the plan year, looks like we might end up a little better than last year. Just never know with health claims.
Are we accruing at the attachment point?
I believe so. We accrue that. Okay, and this is going back to the last full plan year, just a few months back. But, you know, some of the challenges we've had, of course, this is why you have insurance, but we did have several large, specific claims. We didn't hit that aggregate number, fortunately, but we had several, I think about eight claims over $100,000. Highest one was about $450,000. And we can reimburse for that from our reinsurance, but that'll catch up with you when it becomes time to renew the policy. But that's been our challenge. We have had good experience with a third-party administrator, Health Easy, helping us manage those claims better than they have in the past. In other words, things like tennis care be received by the patient in a less costly facility than a hospital, so very good on that. Also, another ongoing challenge, not just with Roswell, but nationwide, is the cost of specialty RX. But, that said, sometimes if you have a very, very serious condition, there's only, there may only be one med, and the pharmaceutical company charges accordingly. We do have, for folks not in that situation, Roswell employees do a really good job of using generic medications. So we have a high percentage of folks that take advantage of that. Again, in some cases, it's not a possibility. And this compares our gross cost per employee compared to the average. And we got that average by looking at similar-sized government entities in this region of the country. It has ticked up from last year, but you can see the trend line for both of these, both the average and Roswell, is up. That's true in healthcare in general. But we still are below the average and doing all we can to manage that on an ongoing basis. Regarding our wellness program, I mentioned just a little bit about this earlier, but you all approved that change to the premium credit, which did increase participation from 60% to 64% of employees. We had another, what, 30 employees sign up as a result, and we hope to continue that. The criteria for that program is you go through a biometric screening annually, and that's coming up this next month here in the city. We'll have a group event. And then, based on the outcome of those biometric screenings, you're placed in a couple different options, either coaching, health coaching, or medical coaching, depending on the condition, et cetera. And we also offer things like group fitness classes. We offered the Smart Dollar, which is Dave Ramsey's financial wellness, you know, wellness is like, financial stressors can cause medical issues to. Competition reimbursements is something new this year, where if you enter a 5K or a marathon, the city will reimburse a certain amount per year that costs to enter that. I haven't signed up for that yet, but you can probably tell. And Wellness Wednesdays, we do try to bring fresh fruit to the work sites on Wednesdays, and hopes to do that instead of the vending machine, hopefully so. Regarding our clinic, one nice thing here is that the percentage of visits devoted to disease management, as opposed to this episodic, I got a sore throat or anything, is going up. And that's important for long-term wellness, as well as, you know, costs to the city and the employees, so. All right, and then, final slide here, as far as benefits goes, as you know, we've got two retirement plans, the DV, or defined benefit plan, what you'd think of as a traditional pension. This past year, we, for the first time, actually have more active employees in the second plan, the newer plan, defined contribution, than in the pension. So that's tipped 51% of employees now in defined contribution. But different plans, the city makes generous contribution to both of those. But of course, the employee can invest as they choose, based on our different investment plans, in the defined contributions, more like a traditional 401k or so. Any questions I can answer about any of these? All right, thank you all.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. So in today's presentation, I will give an overview of what the FY 2020 revenues are estimated to be for some of our major funds, based on past trends and economic indicators for 2019 and 2020. So beginning with our major fund, the general fund, the total proposed revenues for FY 2020 are estimated at $75.6 million. These revenues are not final and will be refined over the next month or so. Property tax makes up 35% of that revenue at $26.2 million. Sales tax makes up 34% of that revenue at $25.9 million. Alcohol franchise and business taxes make up 21% of the total revenue. The other revenues make up 10% of the total general fund revenue of $75.6 million. So in the next few slides, we will discuss each of these categories in a little more This slide gives a comparison of the FY 2020 proposed revenue against the FY '19 revised budget and the FY '19 estimate. We expect to end fiscal year 2019 on a positive note, with revenues estimated to come in approximately $1.8 million higher than the revised budget. And a major portion of that increase can be attributed to sales tax revenues that have been coming in higher than anticipated. And we also expect an increase in our franchise taxes from what we had budgeted by about $200,000, and also an increase in property taxes by about approximately $500,000. The proposed revenues for FY 2020 are $75.6 million and are based upon a current mileage rate of 4.955 mils. A major portion of the decrease in revenues between the FY '19 estimate and the FY 2020 proposed is in the property taxes, and I will provide more details on that in the next couple of slides. So the chart on this slide gives a 10-year history of the mileage rate, represented by the blue columns, and the property tax revenues represented by the green line. Our staff is currently working on developing a recommendation for the FY 2020 proposed mileage rate. Hence, there is nothing shown for that on this chart. We received the budget request from departments a week ago, and we are working to develop a staff proposed budget that will include a recommendation for the proposed mileage rate, based on what we've received so far. The FY 2020 property tax revenue is proposed at $27.8 million and includes the debt service portion. This property tax revenue has been calculated using the current approved mileage rate of 4.955 mils. And the next slide provides a breakdown of that $27.8 million. So here, you will see what makes up the property tax revenues. And as I mentioned on an earlier slide, the general fund revenues is due to the lower property tax revenues expected, as a result of the new homestead exemption bill taking effect this year. Do you have a question?
That's a little bit better than you originally anticipated, isn't it? I think the first presentation we saw was 1.6 something.
I'd have to go back and read that.
Okay, that would be something I'd be interested in knowing, but I think it's gotten better.
Okay. So, as for the bill, the base year for each residence is the lowest value from 2016, 2017, and 2018, with an inflation adjustment of 4.23%. So for the FY 2020 proposed property tax revenues, we have used 2017 as the base for residential properties and grown that by 4.23%. And we have also factored an estimated growth of 2% in real property for FY 2020, in these numbers that we have shown here. The chart on this slide, again, gives a 10-year history of the mileage rate for the city of Roswell, but with the split between the maintenance and operations, which we commonly refer to as MNO, and the debt service portion. So the current split for the mileage rate is 4.705 mils for MNO and 0.25 mils for debt service in the current fiscal year. Sales tax revenue is the second largest source of revenue for the general fund, and the chart here gives a 10-year history of the sales tax revenue for our city. The FY 2020 proposed revenue for sales tax is $25.9 million and has been grown by 1.5% of the estimated revenue for FY '19. And we estimate the sales tax revenue for fiscal year 2019 to come in at $25.5 million. Franchise, alcohol, business, and insurance taxes are the third largest source of revenue for the general fund. For fiscal year 2020, the proposed revenues for this category are $15.7 million. And for the most part, there is not much of a change between the FY '19 budget number and the FY 2020 proposed revenue in this category. The occupation tax revenue has been reduced by $350,000 from FY '19. That's the major change in this particular category. And that adjustment has been made based on how the revenues have come in, in the past year, and also having a better idea of what the gross receipts look like. And the insurance premium taxes have been grown by $168,000 in this category. And then we have the other revenues category that comprises of revenues that we get from licenses and permits, intergovernmental agreements, charges for services, both internal and external, the fines in four features, investment earnings, and some miscellaneous revenues, like sale of assets and transfers in. The proposed revenues for this category for FY 2020 is $7.7 million, and it is slightly lower than FY '19 revised budget, because the transfers in amount is not included in here. The proposed revenues for this category does not include the increase in revenues expected from the proposed fee changes in the engineering application fees, the planning and zoning, and building application fees, that will be discussed later in this presentation. So that was a brief overview of the general fund revenues. Among the enterprise funds, starting with the Stormwater Fund, this slide lists some basic facts about the fund. The Stormwater Fees is the main source of revenue for this fund and is based on impervious surface area on property. Our residential customers are divided into four tiers, and most homes fall within the second tier and pay a monthly fee of $3.95. So this chart here gives a history of the revenues in the Stormwater Fund. We are on track to meet our budget for the fiscal year 2019. And for FY 2020, the proposed revenues for this fund are at $3.31 million. And there is a proposed rate increase of 2.5% that has been built into the proposed revenues being shown here on this slide. The Solid Waste Fund provides sanitation and recycling services to Roswell residents and businesses, and the sanitation fees is the major source of revenue for this fund. Customers can choose between a standard service or a premium service. And the cost for the standard service is $22.03 per month, and the cost of the premium service is $33.45 per month. Now, these monthly costs reflect the new rates that went into effect, starting January 1 of this year. As for this slide, we are on track again to meet our target revenue for FY '19 for the Solid Waste Fund. The revenue number for FY '19 on this chart is the adopted number, and it does not reflect the increase in revenue from the rate increase that was approved by Mayor and Council sometime last year. The estimated revenues for FY '19 are expected to come in at approximately $10 million. The FY 2020 proposed revenues are at $10.98 million and reflect the new increase rates for the sanitation services. And a growth factor of 1% has also been factored into the residential and commercial fees revenue here. The Water and Sewer Fund is funded through the water and sewer charges, and our 2019 residential water rate for a customer that uses up to 5,000 gallons is $9.40, and this includes a service charge of $5.16. The sewer rate is $6.38 per 100 gallons, per 1,000 gallons, sorry, and the service charge is $4. We are projecting a modest growth in revenue for FY 2020. The projection for fiscal year 2020 includes a proposed rate increase of 4%. And as was presented and discussed during the five-year forecast work session, a rate increase will need to be considered by Mayor and Council. And the current approved rate increase of 1.5% will be expiring at the end of this year.
Harpreet?
Yes, sir.
Both of these last two funds, is it correct that this revenue goes towards both operating and capital needs?
Yes, sir. The proposed revenues for fiscal year 2020 for the Water Fund are $4.28 million, based on a proposed rate increase of 4%. The FY '19 revenues are expected to be on target, and we may come in a slightly higher. The proposed rate increases that have been presented will be brought forward as part of the staff proposed budget and will be reflected in the revenue numbers when we bring forward the proposed budget. So this is what we have for revenues for general fund and for the enterprise funds. The next section that we have is the fees, and we have Lenore Bromberg, who's going to be presenting this section.
Good evening, everyone. So the last time we looked at our fees in the engineering and community development for planning and zoning engineering and building permits was in 2012, which is the last time that Mayor and Council passed a policy. At that time, there weren't actually any adjustments made to the fees. It was really just a consolidation of putting them all into one package. The only thing that was really changed at that time was to add a $25 application fee for all applications that come into community development, as well as there was a change in the model for the business permits, sorry, the building permits at that time. Originally, they were permitted by fixtures in the house, and now it has been converted to more industry standard of doing it by valuation. So what we are taking a look at is a need to really bring us in line with industry practice in a couple of our areas. This is not a wholesale change of all of our fees, but targeting specific ones based on changes that have happened here in the city and in the industry. One of those is an upward trend in the application intakes that we are seeing in the department across all of our application types, as well as changes in our code that require additional plan reviews by staff, and also other numbers of people that are actually reviewing them. And then, in addition to that, we've got some regulations that we are required to follow for our inspection procedures that are requiring more staff time. I'm going to go through these quickly. The way that it's been structured in the presentation for planning and zoning is to specifically just talk about the ones that have changed. In the backup that you've got, that is on the table, there's some larger pull-out spreadsheets that will also give you some comparisons to other municipalities in the area that we looked at to compare ourselves to, and we looked at our numbers. And then, if you want other additional numbers, as far as all of the fees that we have, we had that available, we just didn't want to overwhelm you with the rules and prescriptions that we do have. For the rezoning, the only thing that we are looking at changing for our rezoning applications is that if we have an applicant who is going through the process and decides to make some changes that are not based on staff comments, which we have all the time, when all of a sudden we get a new site plan, we would like to be able to charge a revision fee, because we now need to have all of our staff go through and review those. For variances and concurrent variances, the changes that we are proposing is for an administrative fee, this is basically an application fee, for administrative variances, which are normally just handled by staff. As of right now, we do not charge them anything. Advertising is one of the things that we have been just basically paying out of pocket and have had no recoup on those costs. It's not a lot, but as you have more and more applications coming in, we are looking at a flat rate of $100 for mailings, plus doing $90 per sign. This is basically cost coverage, is not any profit, obviously, coming in for that, and it is just kind of a cost of standard for most of our advertising activities. And then, again, for revisions, if we have an applicant who requests the revisions, again, not because staff has requested changes based on our reviews, we are looking at adding a $100 revision fee for, basically covering the plan review cost for having that revision taken into account. For our plating process, did you have a question?
Just a quick question on this changes for revisions. Is that the amount pretty standard from other cities?
It is. So when you look at other cities, it's actually very low. There are some, for example, in Alpharetta, they charge $325 if the applicant just wants to defer. So you forget even that they're doing a revision, but if they defer for any reason, there's a fee for that. There's other cities that charge $350 for those revisions. It's, so this is really nominal. Again, not trying to recoup all of our costs, but at least to have something for us to be able to have those additional plan reviews covered and at least trend.
I mean, I'm sure that doesn't even begin to cover the time.
None of this will actually recoup all of the costs that we probably spend from a staff time perspective, but just to make it, you know, worth everybody's while.
So as a, as a finish mark, how many administrative variances do you all have, like, given the longer hours that you've been? I'm just trying to think about what total revenue we're talking about.
Well, and I will tell you, I'm going to talk a little bit about the totals we're expecting at the end, but it's actually very difficult for us to identify that right now. When we pull the revenue numbers, we can get a bulk number by these various groups, but I don't necessarily have a way to correlate that to the number of applications that are coming in. But I can let Jackie answer some questions about more on the administrative side.
I can say, in the last two months, that we've probably had just under 10. But in a given year, sometimes you can have up to maybe 30 or so, other times you might only have five. So it just depends. That's an average. And there are numerous planners and other people who touch that application and review it. So, and for many years, as you see, it's always been. So, and for many years, as you see, it's always been...
This really just would cover application intake, putting into the system so that we have a track record of it and then doesn't, you know, cover plan review time or anything like that where the staff may be working with them. On the plaits, the change that we are looking at on the final plat, we currently charge $100 flat rate for a final plat to come in. Our counterparts tend to do a flat rate plus a per lot so that the scale of the project gets accounted for. The comparisons are some cities charge a flat rate of $750, some start at $350 with $20 per lot or $20 per acre depending on if it's residential, commercial. We're proposing a $200 flat rate and then $10 per lot. This does cover the additional plan reviews that we're doing across all the departments and within community development and allows us to get it through the process. Again, doesn't recoup all of those costs, but would certainly be helpful. The administrative division plaits, we currently are charging $50 for those, looking at increasing that back to $100, again, for staff time. We're spending a lot more time on the division plaits that come in because of the stormwater requirements in particular and making sure that the ordinances is being implemented when those division plaits come in as per the code. This also covers other articles within the UDC such as existing streets when we may be going ahead and having those conversations with our homeowners about sidewalk construction or other roadway improvements they may need to make. And this is where the first time that we would have an opportunity to talk to them about some of those other requirements in the UDC that would come on it later in, but we want to have them documented upfront in that plat process. Then for design review, again, the only change we're looking at is for design of the DRB minor application. We currently don't charge a fee for these. Looking at a $50 flat rate for those, basically that covers the application entry as well as staff review time. The planning and zoning department has been expanding some of the reviews on those to make sure that either engineering or transportation are taking a look at projects as applicable to make sure that, again, any other code requirements outside of just the standard planning and zoning code are being caught at an early stage in the process. Same thing for their historic preservation commission minor applications. We currently do not charge for those and looking at doing a $50 fee, again, allowing for the entry into the system as well as our staff plan reviews. For our river corridor projects is another one we have not been charging any fees for. And I know Jackie spends an awful lot of time with these. They can be very complicated, trying to find all the old files, trying to coordinate with the surveyors and the property owners as well as with ARC to make sure that they get through us in a review process. They're also reviewed by the city engineer when they come in for application. And then all that also gets coordinated with ARC back and forth until ARC approves it and then comes back here for mayor council approval. So there's a lot of folks who touch this. It does look like it's a very large increase as far as going from zero to $200, but it is just a dent in really what we do as far as processing those because they're just so...
They pay a fee and it goes straight to ARC. So that is the payment they submit to the city of Roswell has always been a payment that goes down to ARC for their review of it. However, they've never had a payment that's ever had been accepted in here at the city. So we always have to advertise for the Metropolitan River once, so we've always taken care of the ads and the signs for whenever these have come through over the years. So the $200 would basically take care of the ads and the signs.
And our other jurisdictions near us that also deal with the river corridor charge a minimum of $250 for a single lot, or they do, there's some other things that the fees, I think they basically double the fees. Whatever the MIRPA fee amount is that they pay to ARC, there's some jurisdictions that basically ask for it twice. And then there's another one that charges $200 because they actually go through a public hearing process. We do as well, but that's what they're basically focusing their costs on. Any questions about any of those? All right. So for the engineering fees, what I've done to present this is to break it down by application type in the sense of single family versus non-single family. And then for single family, I have a below an acre screen for you as well as above an acre. So what's up on the screen in front of you? Currently, the fees that we charge for the application fees, the plan review fees, a resubmital if they have to come in for a third time, their first resubmital is always free, and then if they have to come in again because they have a third round of comments, we begin charging resubmital fees. The permit itself, as well as if they come in for a revision during construction at their own volition, then we have a revision fee there as well. What we are proposing to do is just to make an adjustment to the plan review fee. Again, because of code changes and some of the requirements that we have for documenting our reviews for our MS4 permits as well as for the number of changes that are in the code and making sure that all those plan reviews are completed, we're looking at increasing the plan review by $50. So the bottom that you see there, if a standard project coming in today with an application fee, a plan review fee, and the permit fee, it's $125, basically flat rate with those three components, it would go to $175. So the plan review resubmittals and then the revision fees are only as applicable. It doesn't come up very often on those single family projects.
Do you know how that total compares to neighboring communities?
In neighboring communities, let me slip to the next page, I'm still on my planning and zoning sheets. It's very difficult actually to tell some of these and it gets even worse when you start talking about building permits, but based on what I'm able to tell from the way the various cities, and there's a couple of samples that were on the table for you behind the spreadsheets, printouts from a couple of other neighboring jurisdictions, just so you can see how different a lot of folks present them. And if you want to see more backup, I can certainly provide that. But based on what we're seeing, there are some jurisdictions that are actually charging $350 for a single family lot. And then if you have a development that's more, you basically pay extra per lot. It is, it doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense in the way that we've been reviewing it, but that is the way they presented it on their websites and on their applications is what they're charging, which seems awfully high to me. But that, so that's what we're looking at, is just a nominal increase in that plan review fee, especially because we usually have at least two. We have one and then they resubmit and we have a second. That is pretty standard for most of our applications and so we feel that this would help cover the cost of that. So if you look at greater than acre, it's a very similar structure. The difference here is that we're actually looking at, why does it look so muddy? Why am I seeing? I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. Because of the, it's over an acre, the MPDS requirements for paying fees into the erosion control are included in here, so that's why the number's a little bit higher. So we're actually looking at two increases. One is the plan review increase for the exact same reasons I mentioned before, but we're also looking at increasing the land disturbance permit from $50 to $100. This will largely help us cover the inspections that we do on residential properties without increasing that cost significantly. But that is the justification because they are just much larger sites for us to have to go once we get over an acre. We still be going with the same frequency on a weekly basis and any special inspections that we need to do, but for our residential properties, trying to make sure we can cover those costs a little bit more is what we're proposing to do. So the total would be a $100 difference for a larger parcel from the 165 to 265 for a standard project that comes in that's over an acre. And that is, in comparison, is the same with others. There are some that charge even more, but they basically, most of them show the 350 flat rate. Some of our jurisdictions in the neighboring cities actually do it based on valuation, which basically is very similar, that's what we do for our building permits, is that they determine what the labor and materials cost is for the project from a site development perspective and they charge based on that valuation. I frankly don't think that that is necessarily the appropriate way and I would not want to subject all of our permits to that on the engineering side. It would be a much more complicated scale and I'm going to, I'm trying to simplify it in many places, which I'll show you in just a second. So then moving on to our non-single family, so these would be commercial properties, would also include multifamily, townhome developments, et cetera, so anything but a single family house. The changes are to increase our application fee. This is one of the few places that we wanted to do this and that's mostly because they are much larger documents. We have a lot more documents that are required to be submitted for these projects. And so the actual time for inputting into the system, getting the right documents attached, it just takes a whole lot more staff time because of the requirements that we have. Plan review, again, looking at an increase from $125 to $200 to allow that plan review across all the departments for all the code changes that we've got. A minor increase in the actual permit fee and again, a revision increase to go along with that. So if they were to do a revision during construction, we try to make those match the permit fees. So for a standard project to be coming in, it's a total increase of $125 from $275 to a $400 flat rate for anything that's less than an acre. The next one is actually on two slides, so bear with me. It's a much bigger, this is anything that's over an acre and is non-single family. We start to get into a lot more detailed way that we calculate things and that's because, you know, our application fees, our plan review fees are largely the same. We have a breakdown that we do based on the infrastructure that's being installed and a cost per some sort of a unit, and that helps cover inspection costs because we do have to have staff go out and take a look at those various components and sometimes several times over the course of the project. And so this is something we do currently, but trying to bring those numbers a little bit more in line with industry standards. We are still nowhere near some of them and I'll highlight a couple of those as we go through them. One of the biggest changes is to add an erosion control inspection fee for these larger projects. When I have a project that's 10, 15 acres and we have inspectors who not only have to inspect the perimeter, they have to inspect every single thing that's in there at every single phase on a weekly basis and sometimes several times a week when we're having issues because of the rain that we've had. It is very, very time consuming. We are required to do a whole lot more documentation for our regulatory agencies who want to see that documentation after the fact. And there are several jurisdictions who do this. I have done it as a proposed, it looks as a flat rate, it's actually at $100 per lot and then $500 per acre if it's a commercial site. That is very similar to what some of our neighboring cities do. For example, Sandy Springs is $200 per lot and $700 per acre. So we felt like we're asking for something that's going to help give us a nominal coverage. What this has been based on is a 10-acre site to determine, I think it's a 10-acre site or it was a certain number of lots. And so we used a standard and applied it across all the factors that you'll see here to come up with a sample project that this could be a potential cost for because they're all over the place. We could have, you know, 80 lots or we could have 15 and it would just, this would vary based on that. The other thing that changes as you go further down, we've got our roadway inspections, curb and gutter, base and paving, our striping and so forth. These numbers look like very big changes when you start looking at the floor and after comparison. But for example, we're currently charging 40 cents for every linear foot, we're looking at increasing to a dollar. Many of our neighboring jurisdictions charge upwards of $15 or $16 per linear foot. So we're not trying to make money on these, we're trying to just have enough to cover the various inspections that our different departments would be doing out in the field. Continuing on to the second page, we don't have a cost associated with traffic signals and miscellaneous improvements. And that is something that is based on the actual intersection improvement and we work with our transportation department to figure out what kind of inspection costs we might need to accrue there. And then continuing down, looking at some increases, our storm drainage is probably one of our bigger ones that we're looking at, the storm drainage, storm structures, headwalls and our water quality in ponds. Those are our biggest increases that we're seeing. That has to do a lot with just a lot more that's going in, a lot more diversity. It helps cover time for our staff and multiple staff to go out and see those being installed throughout the course of the project. Any questions about that? I know it's a lot. And this is, we are, we are at or well below all of our neighboring jurisdictions.
If I'm reading that right, it's about, it's greater than a six-time increase?
That, this is, yeah, on this particular analysis, we're looking at a thousand-foot-long roadway, basically what I assumed is it's a cul-de-sac, I believe, with 15 lots and a thousand-foot-long road. I just kind of made up something and used it consistently throughout all of the numbers. So it does appear to be that way. When you do, if you don't look at the, this sample this way, let me find my percentages What we roughly estimated is this, this is a, it's a, yes, it is six full times, but it's going to depend largely on the projects that come in and they're all over the place. So it can be some they're going to have a much higher cost and some they're going to have a much lower increase in the cost. But the fees are to cover those inspections that have to be completed by our staff regardless of what fees we bring in. So if we don't, even if we don't change these, we're still out there. It's mandatory for us to do them, so...
I see.
But yes, for this particular category, this is a very big increase over what we have in there from a unit cost for those various elements.
I guess on this one, it would be, and I don't have to do it now, but it may be as a follow-up, give us an idea of this same project in the neighboring cities.
I can certainly do that. I mean, I can tell you that if going line by line with most of these, the biggest differences is in the stormwater. For example, our neighboring cities charge up to $35 a linear foot where we're recommending going to five from our 50 cents. As well as for drainage structures, we're recommending $100 each. There are some that charge $1,500 each. So ours is still going to be drastically less, but we can certainly throw that example together and do that.
It would just be, it would just be good to say this is the exact same project in a couple of other places.
Sure.
Is it 30,000 or is it, you know, 7,000?
Right, sure, absolutely.
And I realize you can't get the exact because they're not going to match up exactly, but just in the ballpark.
We can do that, not a problem at all. Yes?
Yeah, a question, and I don't know if this is a separate conversation or is it something that could be bolted into this schedule, but is there any sort of fees, opportunity to do fees for time to completion? I mean, based on from land disturbance to completion because obviously your time increases dramatically as does the impact on the environment based on...
Absolutely.
The amount of time.
So right now, the control we have over that is really downtime more than we have on actual time to completion. Now, our permits currently state that they have two years to finish their project or they have to request extensions. It doesn't necessarily say that we will shut them down because they're not done in two years. The, probably the worst offenders that I have in that particular category are single-family lots that start building and then they don't, and then they start building and they don't and they change builders and are being moved from 70 to Florida and become an absolute nightmare for us. The larger projects, which have the larger amounts of disturbance typically are done within that timeframe. They're usually in the 12 to 18, depending on the size of them, up to 24 months. Then the other area that we've got some control over is the amount of area that they're not working in that can be left undisturbed. So we've got some control and if it's been stabilized, we don't have to spend as much staff time inspecting that as we do on the areas where they're actively working. So we currently have some things in place where we have some control on that. I would have to defer to the legal office to see what other kind of controls they've done, but I don't, I mean, we can't determine means and methods. We can only say, does it or does not comply with code? So I don't know if there is any way that we could apply anything from a schedule perspective. That would be something we could look into. I'm not aware of any other jurisdiction who has been able to enforce something like that.
I mean, it seems like that two years is reasonable, but I can think of several that have been, you know, prepared and nothing's happened. So, you know, I just don't, if there's anything that we can do to kind of improve that.
Right. And then our opportunity there is that if they don't have any activity for six months, we can shut them down, force them to stabilize, close their permit, and if they want to restart work, they have to reapply and pay all over again because they don't get their money back when they do that. So that's really the only other right now incentive we have is we do have that six-month window that we can use both on the building side and the engineering side to light a fire under those who aren't moving as quickly as we'd like to. But again, it's six months, so that's not, I mean, that's a long time for some people and it's a drop in the bucket for others, just depends on how you look at it. But we can look and see if there are any other opportunities where we could do something.
So, a couple of questions. On one hand, you look at this and you think, gosh, this is pretty, there's a lot of increases across the board, but on the other hand, I've heard you say that we're still far lower than our neighboring cities almost everywhere.
Yes, sir.
How often do we, I mean, the last time we did this was 2012. Is it going to be that we do this every six years, seven years?
Most jurisdictions recommend looking at every five to six years or so. And actually in 2012, we didn't actually change any of our real, any of our fees, it was just a consolidation of them. So it was probably 2002, 2003 was the last time we really increased anything or actually established them.
And I don't want it to be a money grab, but at the same time, I would like our fees to be competitive with surrounding cities. And if there's revenue that we're missing out on by underpricing our fees, this would be our chance now to fix it, so. Is there, I don't know how hard it is to compare, probably not all these, but you know, a good chunk of these, to get a table that shows what it looks like for a few cities around us. around us where we could find a few that are like.
Absolutely. I could take this same sample project I did and come up with a comparison across the cities that do provide things, and some have different metrics they use, and we can just give a total. You know, we have got the backup that we can do with how they come up with that number, but just give a bottom-line total of what we're looking at from a project to project. Because, for example, if they do it based on valuation, they're taking the cost of labor materials, everything of all of these things, plus grading, everything that goes into erosion control, which this isn't covering, plumps it all together, and then has a table that they go through and say, okay, well, if your project is going to be a $500,000 project, then you're going to pay a certain amount for the first $250,000, and you're going to pay this much or $3,000 after that. So we can do a comparison of how we fall into those. And then maybe that we want to change and go to that sort of a metric instead. It's about half and half of what folks are doing.
So I just feel like if we're going to update it, we should make sure we're going to far.
On some of the permanent fees, we can't charge more than our costs. We don't charge, we don't cover our costs now, obviously, because we don't charge anything. But on some of the permanent fees, you're not charged any of your costs.
Yeah. And I don't think we should make money on it, but you know, when I hear that we're charging five for linear foot on something and other cities are 35, I think.
So would you, would you say that bringing us in line with these fees would help us be faster at what we do and more streamlined when it comes to possibly putting this toward our resources?
I'm not sure how much time it would actually save, other than just trying to cover the cost of our doing business a little better than we are now. It doesn't necessarily, these changes don't, you know, add staff time, don't add staff persons to doing the reviews. That holds steady. So that's not necessarily a one-for-one, it's not something that can actually correlate together unless it's where, something where we were truly recouping enough of our costs that we could afford more staff to do things faster.
Right.
And this, this, we have not done an analysis to see how, what that correlation is. We have, in a couple of places, taken a look at, you know, staff hours, if you assume X number of hours, and this is the stat that's doing what's an average rate, and taking a look at how those numbers play out. And we could certainly do some more homework on that to see how that, I've done it on a few just to make sure the numbers didn't seem obscene because it doesn't, when you see the comparisons, it looks like, wow, we're changing by, you know, 659%. Why are we doing it? But when you start looking at the actual, you know, how many inspections and how much that covers, and the person going out there for an hour every week, and then on some weeks he's got to go for four hours, and you start adding all that up, you see that we don't even come close to covering it. But we can certainly do that from a plan review perspective, the inspections and all the staff that would touch a project from beginning to end and make an estimate on what we think that is to show all of that built into it as well.
If you look at our staff size versus, say, Alpharetta or somewhere else, do we have significantly less staff?
We're probably pretty comparable. There might be some that have more. There's, interestingly enough, I would say with Alpharetta, we're probably the closely matched as far as staff size. They may actually have a few less than we do, but bring in about the same number of applications as we do as far as active projects they have. On the engineering side, I'm not sure about the building, but I can, I can certainly say that on the disturbance side of things. Other staff, I would say Sandy Springs is bigger than ours, but they've just got a bigger city to address. So I'd say Milton's probably smaller and have a far fewer projects that are coming in, and they charge more than us, so. And I can also look at that too, just kind of a staff count of, and in many cases, it's easier to pull how many kind of active projects they have to have kind of a correlation to that for you. Anything else on this before I move on? All right, the next category is just some others, and this is actually to get rid of some fees. We don't currently process any steep slope variances. Those are all reviewed by the city engineer, and there are some things in the code where we have some opportunities to work with them on some things. And so it, based on my review of looking at the code, it's not actually something that is intended to be varied, so I'm not sure why we have a fee for it. So that was one that we're actually looking at taking away, as well as you could ignore the tree removal stuff. This is a comparison to something else. But the state buffer variance letter, we are supposed to be charging $100 per these evidently. That was news to my staff when we came across these and we're doing our research and finding all the old things. So what we're recommending to do is if we've got smaller parcels, a $50 flat rate for those. And what this is, is when we've got a potential state water on someone's property, they need to determine what stream buffers are associated with that, we need to have a certified staff go out, review and inspect that stream to classify it so that we can figure that, and then produce the letter for the city engineer to sign. And so for the smaller, less than an acre parcels, a flat rate of $50 just allows, you know, staff to get out there, do the inspection, make the determination, you know, follow it down, following the stream designation requirements. There's a process that you go through and then coming back to produce the backup for the letter. And then if it's over an acre, doing a $50 per acre for those parcels because they tend to be bigger, obviously, and so there's more time in the field, and we feel like that would help compensate for that. We do not get these very frequently, and we haven't been charging because we didn't know there was an application for these. We don't actually have an application in the system, so I'm not sure how we would have charged for them, but we will figure that out as we move forward. For tree removal, this is for a single-family property. One of the things that we are considering asking for is to add a plan review fee. We currently don't have that. We have an application fee and we have a permit fee, but the time that's spent by staff to actually review the application to determine, are they exempt, are they needing to do an actual permit? I have some backup information that I didn't provide in here, but we have had a steady increase in permit applications over the five years. We're on track to be about 100 more than last year if we continue with the trend we are today. Last year, we had just over, about, just under 500, and we're expecting to be closer to 600 with, if we continue where we are as of February 14th with the number of applications that we've had come in. And many of those are exempt, and they don't need the full permit fee, but we still have to spend a significant amount of staff time reviewing them. Sometimes you have to do site visits, we have to go through their pictures, you know, have a conversation with them, depending on how the stuff comes in. And so that is something that we are considering asking for. For our larger projects, where we actually need to have someone go do a site visit for the verification of specimen tree designation, this would be for our larger projects. We are looking at doing a flat rate of $50 for that inspection, and that would basically be if we are not comfortable with the data that's been provided to us, we have the right to charge an inspection fee as needed on an application. This would not be standard on all of them to be able to go out to do that because unfortunately, if it's a homeowner who's not certified arborist, we may not want to take their word that the tree is a non-specimen. We may want to go out and verify it for ourselves. And so again, this would be an as-needed add-on to an application if we felt that that site visit would be required by the arborist. For non-single-family properties, a very similar thing, looking at a plan review fee where we don't now. These are going to usually be much larger projects where we're having to review the existing, let's say it's an existing commercial property and they've got some trees that need to take down. We need to go out and do usually a site inspection to see where they are, what's going on, what they need to replant. We're reviewing those replanting plans. And then, so this would cover the plan review fee as well as a $100 per acre. So again, we're looking at larger projects if we need to go out and do inspections to field verify the information they're presenting to us in their tree plans and their tree replanting plans as well. And again, this is set up as an example. The $500 is assuming that you've got a five-acre parcel and it's a $500 max, which is actually our current max for a tree removal permit. So it, we tried to make it a sliding scale so it would be based on the size of the property. Now we're moving on to our building applications, and so what I've provided here for you is just the structure that we have today as well as what we're proposing to do. And then I've got some samples on the next slide that I'll walk through with you. So today, our, and I'm actually going to start towards the bottom of the screen first, for our permit fees that are based on valuations. So we currently have this sliding scale of evaluation of a project, which includes labor materials that an applicant tells us that they've got a project that's coming in, and it's going to be a $50,000 project. Then we find that on the scale, we enter that into the system, and it automatically calculates that a $50,000 project is going to be three, it's $109 for the first $5,000, and then it's $6 for every additional $1,000 up to and including $50,000. It happens to be that $379 is that fee. So if you have a $50,000 project, your building fee is $379. And then you would go up to the top, and if you were a residential project, your plan review fee is 25% of that number that you've just calculated. If it's a commercial project, it's 50% of that. So you have to know what your valuation or your building permit is before you can figure out your plan review fees, and that's, but that's how we've got it structured. So everybody pays a $25 application fee, the plan review is based on a percent of your permit fee, and then the permit fee is based on the valuation of the project. And looking at other jurisdictions around us and how they're structured, most of them are very similar with the difference being the sliding scale of what they use for the first number. For example, they may use, instead of $25 for the first, it's 2350. They may get to a certain point where it's, for the $50,000 line item, instead of 379, it's 643. So they just have a completely different breakdown that they're using to determine the cost per additional $1,000 in that valuation. And frankly, when I looked at this, this makes me dizzy. It is, it is very difficult for many of our homeowners who come in and they want to do a simple deck replacement, and they look at this with glazed eyes and what, what, I don't understand this. So in going through and looking at what others, some of the other jurisdictions are due, there are some that do just a flat rate per square foot. So if you're a residential property, it's $6 per every $1,000 of your valuation. If you're commercial, it's eight. What I felt like on the smaller projects, though, is that you can have a very small project and your permit fee will be $12. That won't even cover us going out to do an inspection. I mean, we can't even get the truck for $12 to get out of the parking lot, depending on how, where we're going. So in looking at it, one of the recommendations was for the $0 to $2,000, it's a flat fee today of $25, we're looking at making no change to that. So if you have any project that's less than $2,000, it's a $25 flat permit fee, and then your plan review fee is either 25 or 50% of that number based on our current plan review fee structure. Once you move up to the next category of 2,001 to 5,000, we're making a recommendation of using a $110 flat rate, which is a dollar more than it would be today because today it's $109. But again, it's very simple. We're saying, under 2,000, you're going to pay $25 plus your plan review of 1250, for example, if you're, if you're a commercial. If you are in the 2,000 to 5,000, it's a flat rate of 110 plus your residential, your commercial plan review fee based on that percentage. Once we go above 5,000, so from 5,001 up to however expensive their project is, we're proposing the $6 per $1,000 valuation for all residential projects and the $8 per $1,000 valuation for all commercial projects. So if I go to the next slide, this will give you an idea of what this will look like. The top is our current, and I realize I just typed on here, apologies, the top is residential and the bottom is commercial. So I'm going to actually walk up through this because it's easier for me to do. So today, under our current structure for all residential properties, you can see that our permit fees go up based on that valuation with this being the maximum in each of those categories with the 25, 109, et cetera, all the way down. And then this is the 25% of that fee that would generate our plan review fee. If you look at the next, the orange over to the side, this is using the proposed, where you get the 25 flat rate if you are under 2,000, the 110 flat rate if you are under 5,000 and above 2,000, and then going up, this is based on valuation. So the $300 is based on a $50,000 project. They would basically pay $300 plus 75, so their total is actually less than what it is currently, but only by a little bit. The commercial goes up, so it was 379, now it's 1,200 because of that slight change. So we're looking at most of the time until we get to the much larger projects, the residential projects would be cheaper, and the commercial projects would be slightly more expensive. It's just a small adjustment in either direction. When we get to the larger projects is where we start to see the big change, and that's the 100,000 and up because today, the residential projects would be about $300, and that permit fee goes up to 4,000. And then for the much larger projects, this is for a $750,000 project, they've jumped from 37 to 6. Again, we're doing it based on a flat rate across the board for all of that square footage or for the valuation what they're doing based on those numbers. And then the commercial's the same with a bit higher increase because of the fact that we went to the $8 per square foot, so the $6 per square foot. This is very much in keeping with all of our neighbors as far as the way that they are currently processing their fees. It's just that it's a blend with doing a flat rate for those lower ranges and then doing a per, per hundred, per $1,000 valuation for those larger projects. It's a lot easier to explain to someone who's coming in, and we feel like it balances itself out with some projects having a little bit of a reduction with other projects having an increase. But there's a much larger projects that, and I may add to this, the second way that we calculate these, so the way that our applications are taken in for a building, the applicant has to tell us at the time of application what they think the evaluation of the project is. So at that time, whether they've done an estimate or not, they have to tell us how much they think it's going to cost for all the materials and labor required to build that project. Let's say that it is a new single-family house. When it goes through plan review, the building plan reviewer will calculate the square foot cost based on industry standard for the building type and the square footage of heated space that are going, it's going into that, I believe it's heated space. There are industry standards in the International Building Code that have a per-square-foot cost that are associated with them. And the plan reviewer takes those numbers and then compares them, and if, based on International Building Code, the contractor has lowballed us, then we change that valuation based on that code which we've adopted as a city to follow. If it's less, for example, or if it's more, for example, we have a lot of project in the historic district. The valuation, because it's in the historic district and the various things they may have to do, may be much higher than the international cost of a per-square cost based on building type. So if they've come in and said that it's a $50,000 project and based on square footage, it's a $100,000 project, the city would get the $100,000 valuation based on their permit fees. If it's the other way around, and they said it's 100,000, but based on our numbers, it's only 50, they're obviously giving them the Taj Mahal, and that's their call to say that's what they're saying their project is going to cost. So we do have a check and balance with that to make sure that the fees, that the valuation that our applicants are giving us are in line with the work they're actually doing.
Question about, again, the definition of proposed improvements. Are you talking about square footage on the lot, or is that also applied to like, you know, kitchen remodels or balcony remodels?
It does. So it's all of the above. So if you are coming in for an addition, you're coming in for a new house, you're coming in for a deck, you're coming in to remodel your kitchen, it all goes into this. So it won't, and then for additions, and again, the table is, there might even be, let me see if it's in the samples that I gave you. I can't remember if it's in one of them. Some of the, some of our neighbors keep it in their, the lab, did I give you? No, I didn't. So Sandy Springs, for example, has a square foot construction cost that goes through all the different types of whether you're doing a hotel, you're doing storage, you're doing a business, institutional, and then depending on your building type, they've got this whole formula they filled out of what these square foot costs would be. So for example, if I am building a factory and I am a building 2B, then it's a $96.85 per square foot is what the International Building Code is saying it should cost to build said facility. And so we use that as a check and balance against what they tell us it's going to be. And most of the times, the contractors, they've already, they're in with, you know, they've given a quote to their customer and said, your project's going to cost $49,200, and that's the number they put down. And I forget, sometimes they give us their actual quotes so that we have them in there as backup.
Yes, I would just say that 100,000 to 750 seems like an awfully big range for that number. It would be a science team, so.
Well, and I will tell you, so if we go with the new version, which is here, that doesn't matter. So now, what you're going to see is this valuation range, this valuation range, and then this valuation range. So I just use this as a demo because we currently use this. So with the new structure that we're recommending to simplify things, it would basically be, we're just going to go with a cost for $1,000 from this size project all the way up to however large you want to build. I just did this other comparison so you could see the present day versus what could be if those changes are happening.
That feels a little better.
And that range, that breakdown is very, that's how all of the jurisdiction around us who do a similar thing with evaluation breakdown, they all have the same breakdown like that. I don't know where, I'm assuming it's an industry standard that was developed by the I don't know where, I'm assuming it's an industry standard that was developed by the building officials at some point. But that is, they all use the same thing. There are some jurisdictions that also use that in engineering for land and starbance, the exact same thing. They use it for signs, a variety of different ways that they use it. But they're all have that same, the only difference is that some will add a 5,000 to 20,000 and then break it from 20,001 up to 50,000. They add one more line, but the rest of them are usually just like that. But you're, you're right, it's a huge jump. I'm not sure. So really largely just trying to make it simpler. It's not a wholesale change in most cases. Some of our much, much larger projects will be seeing an increase in the fees, but we also have a lot more inspections that we do for them. So it would be in keeping with, with what we're doing for the rest of our things. These are just some other applications that we do. The biggest changes are looking at doing actually a reduced rate for residential certificates of occupancy, our COCs, at $100 and then 200 for commercials. The temporary conditional partial certificate of occupancy, we are no longer going to be allowing because of the issues we've had with people moving in and opening a business under a temporary certificate of occupancy, which is not authorized. It becomes really an enforcement issue for our staff and could be a real safety issue that we have some great concerns about. So that's something that we're looking at removing. Replacement of permits and COs, this doesn't come up very often, but the cost of going in, regenerating, it's basically like almost putting another application in before we had the $25 fee for that to make a little more incentive or recommend involving it to 50, because, just because you didn't get a good box and it got rained on and you want a replacement every couple of months. We don't feel like it should be as easy to get. One of the things we have right now for our sign permits, whether they're wall signs up on the side of a building or a freestanding monument sign, we've got this breakdown of a $50 permit fee, an application fee and a plan review fee. One of the things that many of our neighbors do is do it based on valuation. So again, to simplify things and lump a lot of stuff together, whether you're doing a deck or a huge, you know, sign, you still have foundation review you have to do. There's a lot of the same technical requirements from a plan review and inspection perspective. And so we felt like it did not make sense to necessarily single those out, but to lump them back in per the valuation, which is what many of our neighboring cities do as well. And then the last couple are just some minor things that come in every now and then. The transfer of a permit or change of contractor, the $200 fee in my mind is not, does not correlate with the effort to go in and change the application's name in the system. So we're looking at a reduction to that. Again, it's not something that happens very often, but it's simply, you know, I've hired a different GC and I want that changed in the system. And so we're able, able to do that. Sometimes we have properties sell in the middle. Let's say that it was owned by the builder and then the homeowner bought it and they want the information on there, especially once they get their certificate of occupancy. And so this allows staff to go in and make that adjustment. For the house moving permit, this coincides with the demolition permit. They match the same fee, it's the exact same inspections, the exact same plan reviews. And so rather than have them be all over the place and they're kind of confusing, we were asked to make those match. Fence site plan review is something that's new. We actually have run into a number of issues. We don't permit fences. We have fence design requirements and code requirements in the Unified Development Code, but there's not necessarily any oversight we have with those installations until they're in wrong. And we have to go tell someone through code enforcement that it's backwards, it's not on their property, whatever the case may be, it's too tall. And so one of the things that we are asking for is to allow for a fence site plan review. It simply would be an application to have at least one person on staff take a look at the property, where it is, maybe even make a site visit to verify that the information they presented to us is accurate. We have had a number of issues with these coming through. We, if it's a subdivision, we require them to do a design review board minor application. And this then allows us to do at design, if they come in later, a second review by other staff. Or if it's not something, it's just a single-family residential property that does not require to go to design review board and we have no other chance to see it, we can at least assist and guide them to make sure that they are putting it in the right location. It's not blocking a fire hydrant or a water meter or it's facing the right way. There's a lot of questions that come up, especially with neighborhood compatibility buffers and other conditions that might be on a subdivision that we want to make sure are being complied with. So that's what that would cover. And then the utility reconnect inspection fee, we actually do these now, we just don't charge for them. And this would just basically be a minor application fee to help cover some of the cost for the inspection time to go out and do that. So based on our fiscal '18 revenues that we brought in, this is the increase that we are roughly expecting based on if one of everything that we just went through came in. So what we did is we looked at if one of every single application that we have in here came through the door, what is that grand total? And then looked at the changes that we're recommending from a fee structure perspective and then applying that percentage back against these three categories that we report revenues for to the city. It is not a huge increase. I'll tell you what the percentage is roughly. The total increase in the zoning and land use is roughly 13%. On the engineering applications, which is based in, on a, on a simple project, roughly used across all the boards for that is about a 64% increase. And then with the building applications, it's about a 26% increase, largely because of the increase on those larger projects that we talked about. It's not rolling it in, but it's a little bit.
So just one, one item. Can you, I think you sort of just did it, but can you do it in dollars later? Don't do it now.
Sure.
The drivers of what's, what's creating the 300,000, what's creating the 96,000? It'll go back to Councilmember Grower's question about whether we actually now could put more people on these things and make it more efficient for, for our citizens who are trying to do these things. So that would be the question. Then I have two other questions if we have, because we're running short of time. So Floyd.
Where's Jim? Is Jim still here?
If you could give us, again, don't have to do it now, the value in dollars of a 3% salary increase? And then one question on page 14 for Harper.
Yes, sir.
You used a 2% increase in real property value? And it would be good to know what historically that's been? And I think, I think I remember you've said it was 4% in the past. So whichever number it is, if it's different than the 2%, it would be nice to know how much is potentially available there.
In the past.
Yeah. So we know that we put in 2% in our estimate for 2020, but if it's been 4%, it would be good to know how much, because you show a decrease of 1.2 million, 1.3 million here, but that's because you've used 2%. If it was, if it's been 4%. That 1.2 million is going to be a smaller number. It would be good to know that. Likewise, if it's the other way around, which I don't think it is, or if it's right on 2%, then we kind of know what the play is there. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Is there anybody in the public that has a question? We are adjourned.